Hello, everyone.
Could you stay right here?
Stay in camera view. All right, here, let me help you.
Hello, everyone. I like to be in the front, not in camera. I just want to thank everybody that did the February Walk Challenge. I know some of you didn't even give me the forms. You just wanted to do it, which I think is terrific. Some of you started walking for the first time or kind of got a pedometer to kind of see what you're moving at. And I think that's the whole reason I do that Walk Challenge, because February can be a really tough month. So we have the drawing today, and I've asked Paula. I have a drum roll from Kathy. So we're not going to go third prize, because there really isn't a third. There are three prizes up for grabs, all right? So the first one is going to be this beautiful bottle of wine. Mix them up, mix them up.
Rachel Smith.
Rachel Smith. Now Rachel's son is here, so I don't think Rachel is here, but we will put that aside for her. All right, the next one is a charcuterie board and a bottle of wine for s-- well, the charcuterie board is for six people from dining. Ready?
Judy Doubleday.
Judy! We're coming up, Judy. This one is for massage. And if you don't want it, talk to us girls up here.
Poor guy, yes.
David Riker. All right, Carly, anything else you have to announce?
Spring walk on the 26th.
Not yet. Way further.
Okay. All right. Next up to give an update on the Scholarship Committee, Marilyn Kelton-Bourne. Watch the wires.
The Scholarship Committee raised, well, the Beverwick residents raised $35,726 in this most recent campaign. And that's only the checks that have come into the Beverwick office. Some checks go directly to the foundation. So we don't yet have... You can't hear me?
No.
Okay, we're doing that.
Try now.
Can you hear? Okay. The scholarship fund raised $35,726 in this most recent campaign. But that's only the money that has come into the Beverwick office. Some funds go directly to the foundation, and we do not yet have that data. We give the checks out in the fall. Last fall, 16 students received the checks. Five of them were seniors, four juniors, three were entering sophomore year, and four were freshmen. Yesterday, Jim McElroy, who's the chair of the committee, delivered to the members of the committee five applications for, that we will be reviewing in April for next year. So that is, yeah, we don't yet know how many will be receiving the scholarship for your freshman year. And the average donation from the data that we have currently was $310.66. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you. And thank you for your donations.
Certainly, I second that. Thank you all for your donations, and thank you to the Scholarship Committee that meets on a regular basis and keeps that all organized and reviewing all the candidates. So we definitely have some good applicants this year. So thank you again. Next on the agenda, we have Albert Sagowitz, who's going to give an update on the Nominating Committee.
Thank you, Paula. Well, there have been some changes in the election process for the seven candidates for the positions on the Resident Council for the term beginning June 1st. We had been working on the premise that we would have nine candidates for the seven positions, that we would be doing a balloting in the beginning of May. However, things have changed. One of the nine candidates has elected to have his name removed from consideration. So that, of course, leaves us with eight candidates for the seven positions, which is a rather difficult number in order for us to actually have a balloting. One of the eight names that remains is mine, and I am withdrawing my name for consideration so that we will have exactly the seven members presented to you in the month of May and April for your selection as the candidates for the term beginning on June 1st. I always felt rather uncomfortable about being one of the candidates for election because of the structure of the bylaws, which are rather awkward. I had the position of forming the Nominating Committee. And forming the Nominating Committee, being responsible for choosing the candidates, it seemed to me an ethical problem about claiming one of the positions for myself. But with a number of people suggesting that they would like to see me returning for a second term on the Resident Council, I considered having my name submitted as long as we had an actual balloting, because then there was a possibility that I would be rejected as a candidate. But there was a possibility. But now that we have only eight, I think it is much more comfortable for me personally not to accept a candidacy for the Resident Council. So as the situation stands now, and it always seems to be subject to change month to month, that next month, which is April, the seven remaining candidates will have roughly a minute or so to reintroduce themselves to you, to tell you how long they've been here, the kind of activities they've been involved in here at Beverwick. And then presuming no other new candidates come, and the slate is always open until April 30th for anybody else who wishes to be considered for nomination. Then, in actual April, we will have the seven presented to you for essentially a ratification that they will be your chosen representatives for the council beginning June 1st. We have a lot of questions, I'm sure, today about dining situations, but are there any questions remaining for me? Yes, please.
Are the nominations still open?
Nominations are still open. Any resident may submit, anybody, up until April 30th.
So I have something for you to consider. If another nominee presents themselves, your, having withdrawn your name from consideration, will not have achieved what you wanted it to do. You might want to think about staying on the candidate roster.
Well, as I mentioned briefly, there's all subject to change. If any such person comes, I will reconsider my position. But as things stand now, we will have seven people presented to you next month for the Resident Council. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Phyllis Fader-Burrell is going to give an update on the Heart Review. Want to hold or do you want me to put it in the holster?
I'll try to hold that thing just so if they can hear me. Thank you. I'm standing in for Cheryl Reeves today, the new editor, of course, of the 2024 Heart Review. And this is one last reminder to everyone. If you haven't sent in your talents, your favorite painting, your favorite poem, your favorite photograph, your favorite story. The deadline is the end of March. It's coming up very soon, March 31st, and we hope to get more. We've had quite a lot of submissions. We're very happy about that. We need more stories. And we've written all the storytellers to tell you, please, send in stories. But it's a very short period of time now, but we welcome. And, you know, for those 47 people, I'm sure many of you are out there who submitted for our 2023 Heart Review, it's exciting to see your work in print. Many of you maybe have already done that, or you've had shows. But consider it, and we'd love to have you participate in our next edition. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And there are guidelines, if you don't have yours, at the front desk.
Okay. And also, just while we were talking about the Heart Review, we're going to be doing a marketing event around the Heart Review on April 9th, I believe is the date. So we're going to have a panel of residents who submitted to the Heart Review to talk about their work. And it's just, and the event is actually a resident referral event. So you will see invitations going in your mailboxes shortly that inviting you and a guest, somebody who you think might enjoy living at Beverwick in the future and might want to come and see what our residents here have to offer and the many talents that we have here. So that will be coming up. So I thank, while I encourage definitely to move forward with the Heart Review, because I think it was an excellent publication, I want to thank the panel ahead of time that will be helping us with our marketing event. So it should be a good event. And when you get that resident referral, please think of friends that you might have that would like to come see us. All right. And next up, we have Matt, who's going to talk a little bit about dining. A little bit.
Good afternoon. So everybody's received the memo, so I'm just going to go over a couple of the highlights just so you're aware what's coming up. So tomorrow, we've taken down the plastic wall that separated the bistro piece from the south dining, which will now be considered the bistro. So we moved all the furniture from the main space to the south. So starting tomorrow, we'll be serving lunch out of the bistro. You can entrance, the entrance will be from the new retail space down by the alimony room just because they're going to be doing construction on that main pathway from like 7:00 to 3:00. So if you want to come for lunch, just come down the west wing and come on in the back there. Monday, we're going to switch over Continental breakfast to the back room as well, to the bistro piece. So if you breakfast next week, Continental, come see us back there. Coffee's still available in the coffee shop. The retail space can be open tomorrow because they'll be after somebody back there to guide it. Like I said, we moved the furniture today, so we just want to give you a couple of things to heads up for tonight. So tonight is going to be our dry run. So I need your patience, and it's greatly appreciated this evening. So we're going to regroup and tweak tomorrow as necessary. We did lose 14 to 16 seats, two of which are round tables. So just be aware that there's only five tables that can accommodate tables of five or more. It'll be difficult for us to take, so if we do have more than five tables that want six, it's going to be difficult for us to take two fours, push them together to create a six, because then we're going to lose two seats, so we can't do that. We will have a person available definitely tonight. So if we do get on a waitlist, like we're probably going to anticipate, and you don't feel like waiting and you want to just take out, you could just have that person, somebody will be there to take your order and then fill it for you. Just so we're aware, we're almost to the finish line. We can begin to see the light at the end of the tunnel, and I assure you that it's not a freight train. So after this, I, and I can speak for Ronaldly myself, probably for Paula as well, that I promise we'll have a big, huge party with this whole mess as well. Questions for me before I head back to get ready for dinner tonight? It's been fun, folks. See you later.
So just to be clear too, the work that's being done in there will be adding acoustical panels, repainting, recarpeting. And I think that's it. And then we have new furniture that's coming in for the dining room as well. So that's what they've done in the bistro space, the south dining room. So the acoustical panels make a difference. So I think you'll see that they will make a difference. So that's a positive. And like he said, there is an end in sight. And then each, you know, they're saying probably two to three weeks, you know, is what we're talking about in that main space in there. The one piece that might not be complete at the end of the two to three week is the, what's going to be going around the perimeter of the dining area. But that's okay. We can still reopen it and have like a construction wall there, much like we do in that one portion, in the shelf. And we are going to have to start recalling these areas. I guess renaming them, maybe. But so that might still be, you know, under construction after we open, but at least we can move all the tables back in there at that point. So any questions on dining?
Will the ramp be done at that same time?
So the ramp is going to be done during this time period, so we're going to have to figure that out. We talked about them doing it, perhaps doing it at night. We said after dinner one night to do the ramp because they figured it'd be one night for rip up and then another night for laying it down. So we still haven't finalized the plans for that, but that was the tentative discussion, that nighttime work. And we thought nighttime work might be a little bit more appropriate for that area because there's no apartments really right there that will hear it where if it was in this hallway and it was nighttime work, that would be more of a disturbance.
Also, if you live in South, you have to go up and down that ramp during the day.
Right, right. So that's why we thought night might be more appropriate. When we actually get the dates of when they want to do it, we'll also look to make sure there's not an event in here. So we'll try and work around that as well. Somebody else have their hand raised? Yes?
Will there be wheels on the new dining room chairs?
Yes. So the question is, are there going to be wheels on the new dining room chairs? Yes, there are. Yes.
Is there, are the plans still to reutilize some of those lovely plants that are on the edge?
Yes. Yep. We will be reutilizing them. We've even talked to the designer ordering the pots and where we'll be putting them so to rehome. Perhaps not all of them, but a portion of them, definitely.
If you don't use all of them, would the rest of them be available to any resident who might want them?
That actually came up this morning, and we're going to see what we can reuse. And then I think that's exactly what we'll do, that perhaps we can say if anybody's interested in these plants that they're available before. I mean, we don't want to throw away good plants. Right. All right. Any other questions on the dining room? I'll talk a little bit more about renovations, schedule, and where we're at. All right. So the library is still a work in progress. So things that we have to complete in the library, we're going to be in those open spaces next to the fireplace. We're going to be adding shelves there. So we have to wait for those to come in. And then we're going to, there's still some books that need to be re-shelled. They will be added there. We're going to add a standing bookcase for the paperback books and order magazine racks that are currently on that table that's up. That's not meant to stay there. So those are the, and then the two chairs that are in the library just don't go. So we're going to be moving them out elsewhere in the building and then ordering two new chairs for that space with some color. I think it'll look nice. So we're looking at something similar to the orange chair that's in the lobby and moving that in there. So I have heard some concerns about, we got the tables in last week, so about space in there. So we can evaluate that and see what we're working with. If we need one less table in there, I'm sure we could find a place for the other table or a smaller table. We're looking at a smaller table for where the current reader is on as well. So things can be manipulated. In general, you know, the furniture that we have is the furniture that we have. We're not ordering new furniture unless there's something wrong or defective with the furniture that came in, so, which there is in some of them. So we're waiting for replacements on those. But I've heard some complaints about cushions being too hard. So what we are doing is looking in those specific areas and relocating that furniture to perhaps less utilized space, to sitting, not, you know, sitting areas that we know are used all the time. So while we're not changing it out, we're going to try and rearrange to make sure that, you know, we have the best setting in each sitting area. Does that make sense? Okay. So we already talked about the dining, the south dining room, acoustical panels. You'll notice in the south dining room, when you go in there, there is a light fixture, a new chandelier. That's not the one we ordered, and they made a mistake and ordered the wrong one. However, the one that is coming in doesn't look all that different. It is kind of the same style, but it's not as abstract, I'll say. So what they did is they put some temporary downlights in there. So you'll see those as well, but know that lighting has to go into the south dining room still. That has to be fixed. And so we had new furniture come in on the 14th. The art room. We still need a counter in the art room along with the sink and a panel that goes under the sink. And we need one more chair in the art room. So we're still waiting on that. And I think, any other renovation updates? For the library too. I'll get your questions, one second. But for the library too, we did order, it's going to be like a film that's placed on the door, a part of the glass panels that are in there. It does feel a bit like you're in a fishbowl if you're in there with all the glass. So the main doors coming in, they're glass with glass side panels. We're going to leave those glass, put the film on the two sides. So that's the plan there. Okay. I saw a question. Yep.
What about the artwork and mirrors that have yet to be put up on the wall? What's the problem there?
So the artwork and the mirrors that have to be put up?
The decorator's doing that when all the rest of the artwork.
So she's waiting for the rest of the artwork to come in, and that means we'll hang the remaining artwork that needs to go up that is currently in the building. Yes?
Speaking of artwork, the new entrance to the south dining area should take people past the current art exhibit. Some people who might not have seen it already. I urge my fellow residents to take some time looking at the rather extraordinary photographs that are on.
I agree. So if you couldn't hear that, the new pathway to the south dining room, which will be the bistro, you get the opportunity, if you're coming from the lobby, to see all the resident artwork that's up there. But it's always nice, whether you're going in there or not, to take a walk down that hallway because it's always impressive. And that's changed out how often? Every two months. Yes?
On chairs by the pool table. One stuff is there, but nothing's being hung or anything. Is that going to be addressed pretty soon? Or are we still waiting on bookshelves and whatever?
So for the artwork to be hung, we're waiting on the rest of the artwork that we ordered to come in and then hang everything.
What about the shelves and stuff? Is that on order also? Because there used to be a shelf where you could put games and all that kind of stuff on it, and I haven't heard a word about that.
So if there's a bookshelf that's needed in the area, because we're honestly going to be putting more books in the areas too. So was it a bookshelf that you're referring to?
Yeah, sort of. Maybe a little.
Yep. So we can definitely add additional. We're going to be ordering more bookcases. So if for some reason, when we went through, it was supposed to be replacing like with like. So if there was a bookcase there, there should be a bookcase that was ordered for that area. But if that's not the case, we will get one there if need be.
I happened to be there when the movers came. They didn't know what was wing four, so they dropped it off, the bookshelf.
Yep.
Is halfway down the long hall. I put a little note on it asking, I even asked Frank if we could move it. He said we touched nothing that the movers brought. He wouldn't let anybody move it. In the meantime, all the games and stuff that were in that shelf are on the floor in the corner.
Okay.
And I told him if they would bring it down there, I'll pick up and clean that up. But he said we can't do it.
Okay. So, yes, so there is a bookcase that's in the area that's not being utilized. So we can get, we'll get a bookcase in that area because we are starting to move stuff around.
We have two chairs with two tables up there now, which is great. But they deliver 10 chairs.
They're to be moved.
I don't know what to do with it.
They're already to be moved. Yep, yep. Yes, excess chairs in that same sitting area are to be moved. Yep. Any other hands on renovations? So after they complete the dining room, which will be the major part, the things that are going to be left are, they're redoing all the common area bathrooms. So that'll be, I think, the last remaining item. We have done some, we've asked them to do some pricing on add-ons, like things that, you know, there's leftover funds. So one of the things we're looking at for spring is, oh, they're definitely doing the putting green. So that'll be done. We were just waiting for the warmer weather. And then we're looking at doing something with the shuffleboard, somehow resurfacing that. Last time, the last couple of times we did it, I think it was just us painting it, and that doesn't last very long. So we're just looking at getting a more permanent solution. Any other add-ons that you can think of? So that might be some outstanding things, but the things included in the original scope were the bathrooms. So that's going to be the last piece that they do. Yes?
This is not inside, this is outside. The farthest south entry, right by the road, by the road off the parking lot. It's a very steep walkway. And we talked at a previous meeting, a couple of meetings ago,
Yep.
about getting a handrail for that, especially before the snow comes.
Yes. Yep. So the handrail in that area, we do have that on the list too, to get that along with. A couple of spring projects we had hanging out there is repainting of some of the lines because when we repaved, the painting didn't necessarily get done correctly. And then we also had some driveways in the cottage as well in the spring. And I think that's it for some of our spring stuff, but...
That's not ready until the spring, is it?
The railing? Well, we have it as like a spring project. Well, spring is tomorrow. So yes. So now. Yep. Gloria?
Any ideas on where you're going to put the gazebo?
So the gazebo is not a finalized project. The question was, are we, where are we putting the gazebo? I don't know if we are doing a gazebo. It's one of those things that was out there. And to decide even to do it would be one thing, where to put it would be the other. So any other questions? All right. So let's move on to cable. So a couple of things. So with the cable, the cable switch over, I know it's been a learning curve for everybody. I certainly appreciate your patience. I think we're, I think people are getting it. I think we're seeing less and less. I know we still have things that we're working through, and Corey's been very busy with a lot of that follow-up. So part of the issue when they came in into the cable was they cut a circuit which cut our hardwired internet. So people in the New North and the cottages had a hardwired internet option. And that hardwired piece is no longer working because of something that they cut, some circuit they cut when they switched over. So for a repair for that is we, approximately 30 days from today, worst-case scenario, Spectrum needs to come back and needs to install a new coax cable. And Corey, you can jump in any time if I'm not explaining this right. So Spectrum needs to come in and install that cable. That's the 30-day timeline, worst-case scenario from today. So that service will be restored. In the meantime, Eddie Res is available. So Eddie Res is always available, as long as that's up and running, is always available to anybody who currently was hardwired and not being able to get internet. Eddie Res is available. However, there is, people are interested in adding some security with a VPN. So that could be a workaround. If you are not, if you're not comfortable using Eddie Res, you haven't been using Eddie Res, or you've been using your own hardwired network for certain things, you could get a VPN, which would be a monthly charge, but I think it's very small.
$1.99 to $99 a month, yeah.
Yeah, so like $2.99 a month. We're hoping within a month, our problem is solved, but if anybody has a concern over the next thirty days, Steve can help you establish that VPN connection. Did I explain that right?
You did. The hardwired is why the in-house channels are not working.
So in-house, Touchtown, not working because of that same hardwired issue. We're trying to come up with a workaround for that.
Yep.
So it doesn't last thirty days, but I'm not sure that we have one yet.
Not yet.
Okay.
Can use the app though.
Right.
App works, in-house channel does not.
The in-house channel's on the app?
It is.
You could still go on the app.
You can still go on the app, but you're not gonna get it on your TV. Yes?
I've been getting more emails about cable boxes that haven't been returned.
Yes, so you can ignore those. You can ignore the emails, so we've collected all the cable boxes, so it's, we have told people if you had a DVR box, hold on to it and you needed to return it. If that didn't happen, and when we did the switch over, we took your DVR box. At this point, we don't know what's a DVR box, what's not. They were all placed in the same room. But I can tell you, we've started returning all of them as of yesterday. I would say probably within a week, all of our boxes are gonna be returned, so it will be returned anyway. But if you have a DVR box, that's the one you need to return. If you never had a DVR box, and you're still getting letters about cable boxes need to be returned, please ignore them. Yes?
Are you still accepting errant remotes?
Yes.
Yes. The question was, are you still accepting errant remotes? So yes, if you have one. All right. Anything else on cable, internet? Yes?
You're getting your exercise today.
Is there any chance of adding an interactive program guide to the service that we now have? Seems to be a big gap there in usual service.
Yeah, if you couldn't hear, the question was about the interactive guide, which is lacking from our new program. And if there's any update. So Spectrum is definitely aware of it. We've voiced our preference, but no update.
I followed, I had, there were there were about three questions that I had reached out, because also the channel listing that we gave all of you was the channel listing they sent me last June, when we first started these. And over the time, from last June to now, there are some channels that what it says is not what it is. The biggest one is Smithsonian Channel, says it's 35.5 or something like that, and it's actually RFD, which is like the Rural Farmers something or other. Totally different, not even close. So I, yesterday, I was on the phone an hour with Spectrum Technical Support, sent them all my notes from the channel listings. I spent two portions of my day last week sitting in front of a TV, going through all the channels to see what they were, what was wrong, based on the list that they sent. And so I have five separate Spectrum tickets out there for each of the five communities. And they called me last night at 6:15 and said, so we tweak things on our end, is it working? I said, I don't know, I'm not there. So when I got in today, I had some time. I've sat in my office and watched TV, and it's still incorrect.
Your job is very tough.
It is. I got a tough job. Watch TV and play on computers. So, yeah, so there are still channels that it says we're supposed to get that we're not getting. Be aware too, which I wasn't, some of the sports channels, actually, when you go to it, say there's nothing airing, but they only air when there's actually a game to air. So like the MSG, the Madison Square Garden, two and three level, will only show something if there's an actual game to show. I also asked them about what they were doing, if they had an update on the guide and making it more user-friendly. And basically, the answer was no. That was the short answer. So again, anyone who wants a more interactive guide to see what's on, I encourage you to use like the TV Guide app, or go to tvguide.com. Actually, within our Touchtown app, our community app, there is a link to tvguide.com, already with this zip code in it. The only difference is the channel numbers are based on what is the regular Spectrum channel numbers and not our digital. So you really have to know your networks, what network you're looking for. Yes?
Another feature I seem to be missing is, before, when you were watching a program and you wanted to pause it, you could. Now there's no pause?
So you probably had a DVR box. So, yes, so yes, if you don't have a DVR box, there is no way to pause TV, live TV. So, yes.
Before, we had on-demand capability?
No on-demand.
I really missed that.
I know. On-demand is not available with this level of business service that Spectrum offers now, unfortunately.
That kind of wipes out everything I watch on TV.
I know. It's over, over the time since we started doing this, like the first community, it's really, I get people who approach me who are like, all right, sign me up with YouTube TV, or Hulu Live, or one of those, and they're happy again, because they can record and pause and rewind and all of that. Or they're just like, you know what, I go back to reading more books now. I don't watch as much TV as I did. Which is sad, but unfortunately, that's the way it is, so, yes.
Is the lack of an interactive guide function at the level that we're subscribed to? The reason I ask, as an individual, if Spectrum came into my area with that service and expected me to pay for it, I would cut it off right at the get-go, because it's ridiculous. You cannot find anything.
Nope.
You don't know what you're watching on the channel until, you know, it doesn't even appear as the channel.
Right, well, that's the big thing I hear, is if I come across a movie, I don't know how long's it been on for, what the title is, who's in it, when it's gonna, believe me, I have been hearing this since June.
I believe you.
And we relay this to Spectrum, and honestly, they don't care.
But is it available at a higher level?
No, this is, this is part of the issue, is all they are offering business,
Bulk accounts.
Bulk accounts like ours, is this enterprise system, they call it. So when I've had, so I belong up in Glens Falls, I belong to, you know, different Facebook community groups. And there's been more people even at like apartment complexes in that area who are saying, does my landlord have the right of my apartment complex to tell me this is my cable service and this is, and pre-charge me and my rent and everything? Because that's what Spectrum is starting to roll out to them as well, so...
There's no competition?
No, exactly.
I mean, that's what we looked at, was where it all started, was really, we were out of contract with Spectrum. We had to renew our contracts. And the timing, I guess, was unfortunate when we were out of contract. This is what they presented us, and said, this is the option. We did look. We looked at, you know, something through DirecTV, but it was all satellite dishes. So we were a little worried about things with satellite and weather and them not working. So we did explore some other options, but honestly, this was the best one, as far as channel lineup, the number of channels we were gonna get, and reliability.
I don't know whether you were involved in the negotiations, whether that was higher up, but was the amount of money available, I'm just coming up with an alternative. I mean, if, there are so many of these streaming services that you would get a lot of the channels that you want. If the money was sufficient to allow people to at least get a subsidy toward whatever streaming service they wanted, that might be a viable option. I don't know.
I mean, I know at first, we looked at if people wanted to opt out of the cable service as part of like what we offer, but it really wasn't, it wasn't substantial, so it wasn't anything that we were offering, like an opt-out, buy-out, like your meals, things like that.
Yeah, I mean, like Cory said, I mean, you read more, because the TV is so frustrating to find anything. It was frustrating before to find anything worthwhile most of the time, but now it's impossible.
Yep. Yes?
If you have to go to the hospital, take your list with you, because both St. Peter's and Ellis are using the same system.
So it's, okay, so it's the same channels. Yeah, and I compare to, you know, you go to a hotel, which could be right down the street from your house, and it's the same thing. All the channels are different, nothing's the same. No interactive guide, you know, and that's kind of the package that they're offering to their bulk accounts. Yes?
What sources did you look at, of the Spectrum?
They were different names, but they were pretty much dish-based services. I can't remember anything else that...
Verizon?
Verizon is a good...
So, so the main issue, ooh, sorry, shock. So the main issue with Verizon, it is not available to all areas. And Trinity was very specific. We had to go with a company that would supply all areas. So that included, yes, hospitals down here, as well as like Glen Highland up in Queensberry. So that was part of the problem with going with Verizon, FiOS. Plus, it would also require, because that works off of fiber optics, a lot of rewiring of buildings, so slow, would have slowed down the process, as well as been very expensive.
All right, anything else? Yes?
Trinity seems to be a pretty big customer, but yeah, Spectrum seems to be dictating to Trinity.
Trinity seems to be a big customer, but why is Spectrum dictating to Trinity?
Because, because Trinity is a big company, but Spectrum's parent company is bigger than Trinity. That's what it comes down to. They're owned by Charter Communications, which is even a bigger business than Trinity, so...
Yes?
I know nothing, however. It seems to be, it's all a matter of money. And the package you box is unsatisfactory.
I mean, I think to some degree, it is a matter of money. That doesn't mean that if they were the cheapest, we didn't look elsewhere. But if it were rewiring an entire building, that wasn't an option either. Do you know, do you know what I mean? It's somewhere in the middle. Yes, money, money is a factor, but it is with anything, really. I don't know if that makes sense or answers your question, but...
Makes sense.
Yes?
I don't know anything either about this, but I've been hearing a lot about it with Eddie Res.
Yeah.
A lot of people didn't realize that it's not a secure system. And I'm wondering why we don't have a secure system for a place like this?
Do you wanna talk about Eddie Res security?
So Eddie Res, I know when a lot of people go on and they log on, and it'll say, connected, weak security. So it is a secure network, yes. It shares the same password across all five of our communities. But there is still firewall protection on it, and there is, the problem is, and I'm gonna be as frank as I can, our corporate did not feel, with the network that all of you were using, that to put the type of security on it could stop you going from the sites you wanted to go to. It would block. So there are sites that if we wanted to go to on our work computers, Trinity blocks those. If we put the type of security that would change it to not say weak security, there would be sites you couldn't get to. And I won't, I won't name the types of sites that...
Well, I can give an example.
There you go.
A clean example.
A clean example, yes.
So for example, we have a joke every, every meeting. I can't go on my work computer and Google jokes, jokes for seniors, jokes. I can't do that. It blocks every single site that I go for jokes. I have to do it on my cellphone, forward it over, but, but just, that's just one example of if we start putting those security levels in, it limits people's access to what they can go to. But, yeah, there is still securities that are in place, it's just not, it's not the same as if you went to Starbucks and logged on to their...
Correct, yeah. It's certainly safer than if you went, like Paula said, to Starbucks and logged on to their website, or their Wi-Fi to use it and everything. It's not truly a public network. It's still a private network, but your computer is still going to see it. So that's why it's important to have virus protection and malware protection still on your computer. But it is, you know, it is still a relatively secure network. So, okay.
Yes?
One last observation. I have Norton, Norton has a VPN, turn it on and turn it off. Which secures them a little bit.
Norton VPN? Yeah.
So a VPN adds additional security, correct?
Yes. A VPN, basically, a VPN works on a, either a public network, so you could be out at Starbucks and use your VPN to get to where you wanted to go, or on our site. Basically, it creates a private tunnel for your information only to go in and out of. A VPN though can...
What is a VPN? No, but what, is it a physical thing, or what?
No, it's a, it's a subscription-based, web-based, or sometimes they're software-based, that you can add to a computer.
Sort of like Norton's or MacAfee or something, just downloading something?
Yeah, there's, there's ones out there. What's that?
Norton has it as an option.
Yep, Norton has an option that you can add to it. I will tell you, VPNs tend to slow down your streaming speed though too. So, and with a VPN, everything you use, you have to go through that VPN if you want it to be. So your phone, your tablet, your laptop, your desktop, all of that. Avoid a reason, please.
When you talk VPNs, virtual private network.
Virtual private network, correct.
Really designed to deal with the internet, the big global network.
Right.
And they work, they're very good.
Yep.
But be aware that they do not address an issue that we have here up in the Eddie system. And that is the connection between your computers and your printers. If it is a wired cable connection to your printer, you're gold.
Right.
If it is Wi-Fi, then some VPNs will cover it, some won't.
Right.
You use the term tunneling.
Right.
It's variable tunneling. The more, the more of these features you get with a VPN, the more protection you can do.
Correct.
I think there's a possibility that some people here thought they were printing a check on their computer, and it printed somewhere else in the Eddie system. And you don't know where it went.
In general, rule of thumb, if you can hardwire your printer to your computer, your laptop, even if you wanna print from an iPad and you can get a cable and plug into your iPad before you print, I highly recommend that.
Amen.
Amen, yes, so much better. You're not gonna get stuff on your device, you're not gonna be sending stuff on others. The other that falls into that is smart TVs. Because now, as more people have moved to smart TVs with this conversion, people are seeing, oh, I can stream from my phone or my tablet, and I was trying to help someone connect to their TV. I could see the fire stick that's in my name that's up at Glen Highland, because it's all the same network. So I was trying to help someone at Glen Eddie stream from his iPad to his TV, and a TV up at Glen Highland in the cottages kept going, connect to... And a TV up at Glen Highland in the cottages kept going, connect to Charles's computer. Here's the code for Charles's. And she said something to me and I said, I know who Charles is, it's okay. So, our, that's the worst thing about our network, is it creates all these, we're like one big house and everybody is on and can see other devices. So.
Alright. We could have a whole class on that if we needed it. A couple of other outstanding projects I want to mention. So we do have the erosion study piece that was being done on the, off the fire road, that hill. So we've received all of the, we had to hire an engineer to come up with a plan. All of those plans have been approved by the town of Bethlehem. The next step is that same engineer is going to design the request for proposals to send that out to at least two different vendors to get that price, but we anticipate that that, to get that quote and scope of work, and we anticipate that that will be starting soon. So more to come with that. Also outstanding is we did hire an engineer to do a generator study. So still waiting, I got the report today, but we're still going to meet to go through what that report says, but hasn't been forgotten and still working on that. The sewer building. So there's been some questions about what we can do to kind of camouflage that building. They did come on site this week. They said that we cannot plant any trees, any bushes, anything with substantial roots cannot be planted there. They did say we could put a fence around, which we'll look into doing, and we could certainly plant flowers, but nothing like we had originally proposed to them. They said that that wouldn't be allowed. Also, part of some of the issues with this is we had Mike McDonough here, who several of you've met. He held a divisional position, a maintenance divisional position. That position no longer exists. Mike McDonough is now at Our Lady of Mercy as the facilities director there. So it was a bit of a handoff, so I met with him today just to, not that I wasn't aware of what he was doing, but he was the contact person. So just changing those contact persons and making sure that the people that were working on with these projects know that they should be contacting myself or Tim. Yes.
Can you put a mural on the building? Put a mural on the building, so.
Well, we didn't ask that question, but we can certainly, I don't see why they would have a, well, I don't, I don't know. The question was, can we put a mural on the building?
What building are you talking about?
So the new sewer pump building that's on the fire road.
Which, well, the way it exists now, it's great.
Well, it's there, but other people don't want to look at it.
Oh, look in another direction.
Well, there's one solution. Yes.
I look at it every morning. Why don't you paint it green if people don't like it white?
So it's not our building to do what we want with. I just have to put that out there, that the town owns it. So anything we do, we do have to have their permission. So this is as far as we've gotten. I can certainly ask about painting it. I don't know. I don't know what they'll say. Yes.
With regard to the generators.
Yeah.
That you're looking at, there's a piece of legislation in the New York State Legislature right now looking to make National Grid responsible to provide electricity to customers who have medical needs that would require electricity. It's in there now, they've proposed, come to where it's going, or what's going to happen with it. But it would be interesting to see whether that's applicable to a community like this versus private individuals.
Yeah, if you couldn't hear the comment, it was, there's proposed legislation out there now about National Grid being responsible for providing electricity to people who may have medical needs. So, thank you. Good information to know. Alright. I think that's it for the announcements. Oh, no, a couple of other things. Oh, automatic withdrawal or automatic payments that have been set up. There was an issue this month, but as of yesterday, it's been resolved. So usually, those payments are withdrawn on the fifteenth of every month. That didn't happen on the fifteenth. It happened yesterday. So just wanted to let you know it was resolved. Google Forms, so submitting a work order online. There was, we've heard the last couple of weeks, there's been extra security added, like a captcha, which means select every picture with a traffic light in it. Select every picture with a bike. We didn't do that. We didn't add that extra security on there, so we're trying to figure out if it's a Touch Town issue or a Google issue who added that. So more to come on that, but we're looking into it. Newspapers that are for the lobby, I guess, please don't cut things out of them because they're for everybody, just saying out there. Transportation, timeliness of departures. Please make sure if you have a time and a pickup time that you're on time. If it's for a trip, especially make sure that, you know, you're there at the departure time. If, you know, ten minutes might not seem like a big deal, but ten minutes some days can throw off everything, especially if you're going on a trip and it's ten minutes late. People might miss something that they were expecting when you get there. So just be mindful of that. And our occupancy, occupancy in our independent living is very good. We're at ninety-six point four percent. We have seven unsold units here. Our terrace is completely full and our nursing home is completely full as of today. Don't blink. So, so very good. We're in, we're in a good shape and the sales and marketing continues to work very hard for that. I'm ready for a joke if anybody doesn't have any other questions. Alright. Alright, so a young man wanted to invite his girlfriend to their farm, but was embarrassed by the old-fashioned outdoor outhouse. He kept bickering with his dad to get a modern one with indoor plumbing, but his dad didn't give in. Out of sheer desperation, he slips out one night and with a huge shove pushes the entire outhouse down the hill. Afterward, afterwards, it was still intact, but it was at the bottom of the hill, and he knew it'd be too damaged to drag it back up. The next morning at breakfast, his father asks him who destroyed the outhouse. And at the same time, reminds him of the story of George Washington and the cherry tree. "Yes, Dad," sighed the boy, "it was me." "I'm glad you're so honest," said his father. "And as punishment, you have to start digging the pit for a new one immediately." But Dad, protests the boy, when George Washington admitted to it that he cut down the tree, his father didn't punish him. "Yes, you're right," said the father, "but George's dad wasn't in the cherry tree when he cut it down." Thank you, everybody. Have a good afternoon.